Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this special edition of our Balance in Life series on supporting teen and adult mental health during COVID-19. We're excited to have you join us on today for this important topic. And we're happy to welcome Eric Faw to walk us through this session. So we will have the presentation and at the end of the presentation, we'll have an opportunity for questions and answers that we'll take in the chat box. So without further ado, join me and welcoming Eric.
Thank you. Thank you. It's good to be here. Okay, well, this morning, we're going to be talking about supporting teen and adult mental health during COVID-19. It's going to be a very practical, hands-on discussion in terms of things that you can actually apply today, should you choose to. We're talking about very much, very practical nuts and bolts, things that can be done to help the mental health of teens and adults. Do you want to say, well, I do want to start off by starting with talking about what is I'm going to bring up. Here we go. All right. All right, there we go. All right, so I'm going to start by saying, you know, what is mental health? We talk about supporting mental health. Mental health, as the World Health Organization puts it, is a state of well-being in which the individual realizes their own abilities, can cope with the normal stresses of life, can work productively and fruitfully, and able to make a contribution to their community. Simplified, I like to put it as a person's ability to live, laugh, and love. When a person is able to do those things, their mental health is pretty strong. When things, when stress becomes a big issue, person's ability to live, laugh, and love become curtailed. Things happen and then it becomes hard for us to do that. And that's when we really want to make sure that we step in and help somebody out. Mental illness, and let me first say, I'm going to, I'm going to touch on anxiety and depression during the talk, but it's not always going to be talking about it as a mental illness. So at times, I'm going to be talking about it as emotional, emotional distress, nervous exhaustion, a mental health concern. However, there are times that in the talk that I'll be talking about depression or anxiety as a mental illness. I'll be, I'll be clarifying the difference between the two. As a mental illness is a diagnosable illness. Okay, so that means it's not simply when someone is feeling a little anxious, feeling a little depressed. This is a diagnosable illness that affects a person's thinking, emotions, and behavior, as well as a person's ability to carry out daily activities and engage in satisfying personal relationships. So at some points during the talk, I will focus on actual mental illness as a diagnosable illness. I'll be talking at some point about substance abuse, substance use, disorder, things like that. So at that point, we'll be talking about diagnosable illness. Otherwise, when I first start, I'll be talking about teenage anxiety, and I'll be talking about it in the sense of something that teens are feeling, it's emotion, it's a heightened stress, but not necessarily a mental illness. So we're looking at teens first. Stress and anxiety can be useful. It's a good thing we have anxiety. It helps us to, to stay alert to danger. It's anxiety is really the brain's way of interpreting something as being dangerous. So if I'm walking down the street and I look down a dark alleyway and there's a number of men with large bats and they're waiting for me, it's good that I feel anxious. It's good that something tells me this is not a safe situation. I should not go down this dark alleyway. Okay, but anxiety can also be, obviously, as we all know, can be a hindrance when anxiety becomes too, too strong, too intense, or when anxiety becomes too constant, it becomes something that is more severe, that is long-lasting, when it interferes with school and other activities and family and social relationships. Among teenagers, 13 to 17, there's a prevalence rate of about 31.9% among that age group that have an anxiety disorder. Okay, and 8.3% that have a severe impact based on that anxiety disorder. So anxiety, unfortunately, is already a really major part of teenage, the years of being a teenager. And it's, it seems to be a growing issue, even when the COVID-19 isn't present. I do a lot of work in the schools and one of the, well, the major, the major issue that I've talked, talked to about by school counselors is not drugs and alcohol, it's not vaping, it's anxiety. It's the, it's the fact that the teenagers are walking around just bundles of anxiety and how to help them deal with that. So you take all that anxiety, you take all that concern, all that, 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 those worries that they're, they're walking around with, and then you, then you throw in a pandemic and you throw in taking them out of their normal environment, you put them into an abnormal environment. Obviously, they're, they're used to home, but all of a sudden, they're at home all the time. And they're a different situation. And so that anxiety suddenly becomes a much bigger issue. And it really doesn't have a way of it often doesn't have a way of being released in a way that's healthy. So that's where we, we really want to step in and try to help get, help that anxiety be released in a way that's healthy. And a way to try to minimize the anxiety. So we all know the physical signs and symptoms of anxiety, the pounding heart, the chest pain, the rapid heartbeat, the rapid shallow breathing, dizziness, dry mouth, stomach pains, restlessness, tremors, shaking, some of the behaviors and signs and symptoms to watch out for. And this especially with our kids who, as we go through the COVID-19, is look for the avoidance. Look for when our teenagers are trying to avoid spending time with people, isolating themselves, I'll talk more about that later. When they're showing, when they're showing distress in social situations, the phobic behavior, that's, that's kind of a separate thing. So we really want to look for the avoidance and we want to look for the distress in social situations. All right, so the things that I'm going to talk about in terms of teenage anxiety at the moment are number one, fear of the unknown. Teens, as with adults, are experiencing a worldwide crisis that has more unknowns than knowns. If you're like me, you open the paper in the morning or you, you watch the news in the morning and there's so much unknown, there's very little known. That I know, at least from, from me, raises my anxiety because I don't see a lot of facts, I don't see, or the facts that I see are not positive. I don't see a lot of knowns, this is what's going to happen, this is how long it's going to take, this is how much longer we're going to be in this situation. You don't see those things. You see a lot of unknowns, or you see a lot of answers coming from different people that don't coincide with each other. And so our teens are the same way. They're also experiencing this crisis with a lot more unknowns than knowns. And so we all have the fear of the unknown. When I talk to people about anxiety, one of the things I hear a lot is a fear of being in places or situations, environments that are unknown to them, where they don't know what to expect. Okay, so I'll talk about that. Fear of things that we can't control. We, again, this goes back kind of to the fear of the unknown in the sense that we do better when we can control our environment. The more control we have over our environment, the better we feel about what's going to happen. If I was not prepared this morning, if I did not have things set up to talk about, if I didn't have ideas of what I'm going to talk about, I would have a lot of anxiety. Okay, because that would be, that would show me a lack of control, I wouldn't know what's going to happen. Having control over the environment, having control over what I'm going to talk about lowers my anxiety a great deal to the point where I feel fine doing this. So a fear of things that we can't control really raises our anxiety. All right, the anxiety of being stuck indoors for long periods of time. We're going to talk about adults too in a minute, but certainly this is true of adults and teens both. Being stuck indoors, we are not, in general, people or that are typically do well being indoors for long periods of time. We like to get out, we like to be social, we're social beings. And so being stuck indoors for long periods of time can be very difficult. And I'm going to talk about ways to work with that. The anxiety of trying to find ways to fill their days, and that goes along with being stuck indoors. When you don't have the activities you can go out and do that you're used to doing, when you're trying to find ways to fill your days, when you have teens at home or also possibly younger children, you're trying to find ways to entertain them, find ways to do things together, that of course can raise the anxiety of everybody involved. The anxiety of dealing with family dynamics that may be difficult, dysfunctional, or toxic. One thing that I've been hearing about, which is difficult to hear about, is that domestic violence is on the rise right now. That families don't always function well when they're in a small environment and having to be together 24/7. That, that raises a lot of extra anxiety. The anxiety from social distancing and having less contact with friends. People, again, who are used to going out there and our, and our teens, and I'll talk about this again more, is that our teens are going through a period of life where they're trying to, to become more independent, to individuate from, from us, to become their own, their own people, their own persons, trying to become more involved with their friends, have more of a personality, more of their own sense of self. And all of a sudden, we're asking them to come back to the nest, come back to, to, to the, to the family and really spend a lot of time with the family, which is really not what they're wired to do at this point in their life. Okay, so that said, I'm going to get into talking about some nuts and bolts. So feeling anxious and unsure is a natural reaction to the COVID-19 virus. Okay, so as I've said before, the many unknowns that exist with the virus and the ripple effect from the virus, such as social distancing, things like that, raise the anxiety. At the same time, we want to help our teens manage their anxiety. So we help them understand what they can control. We focus on steps that adults are taking to keep everyone safe, to help them feel like, like things are under control, that, that people are doing what they can, and the fact that their, that the adults in their lives would do anything to keep them safe. While these conversations might not happen every day, they will not be one-and-done talks. Okay, take your teens' lead and answer questions in a clear, calm manner. And, okay, you want to explain to them what's going on, you want to give them information in a way that helps them to understand that adults are leading the way here, adults are doing what they can to try to keep people safe. Demonstrate and have your children act out appropriate behavior in terms of hand washing, coughing into their elbows, hands, keeping their hands away from their faces, et cetera. Use visuals and praise if possible. Obtaining pertinent information from trusted sources such as the CDC can be helpful to increase our knowledge and to help us understand what we can control to make ourselves safer. Okay, so we want to try to get the information from, from trusted outlets because there's information coming in from everywhere. At the same time, we want to be careful in the amount of media and information we have our teens absorb. Their anxiety can be triggered by too much COVID-19 news, especially regarding the concerns and struggles. If you're like me, when you open up the paper in the morning or you turn on the news, unfortunately, most of it is negative. Most of it is, is, is not good news, most of it is about the rise in cases, the rise, the rise in deaths, how many more days we're going to have to be stuck indoors, who's not agreeing with who on what, there's more, there's a lot of negative news. Okay, so you, so you want to be careful in the amount of media and information that they absorb. Like I said, their anxiety can be triggered by too much, can start to feel like nothing else is happening for them except for the virus. Okay, and so discuss age-appropriate information with your children, especially, especially, and I'm not going to be talking too much about younger children in this talk, but certainly with the younger children, we really want to be careful what we let them know, what we're talking to them about, that it's age-appropriate. Involve your teens in other activities. Have them stay involved with hobbies, family functions, and other fun activities. Getting away from the virus for a while with other distractions can help lower anxiety. If you're home with children, spend time playing with your children. Maintain a normal life as much as possible. Have a consistent daily routine for your family. For example, trying to getting up, try getting up at the same time each day, getting dressed, eating, going to bed, have these be times that are scheduled into the day that they know when to expect them. Have a consistent daily routine for your family. Create a schedule for each day with your children to break up the time. This could include class time, playtime, physical exercise, et cetera. Ask for their input in the daily schedule. This gives them, again, back to the control issue, this gives them some control over what's going to happen in their day. This can help calm strong feelings by having a predictable structure. We all do better with structure, it's just, it's just the way we're wired. And so, so having structure, having some, some discipline, having a schedule can really help reduce anxiety. Focus on the positives of the situation whenever possible. There, there is a positive that I've seen. My wife and I go out either walking or biking in the evenings, and one thing that we see again and again, literally every block that we go on, are families out doing things together that they would not normally do, either because of lack of time or for whatever reason, but now they're out doing these things together. And I'm talking about things like a dad and his son, not to be sexist, but a dad and his son throwing a baseball, or a, or a family out riding their bikes together. You know, you have five bikes riding down the, down the street, and they're all, the whole family out there on bikes together, things like that. So, you know, it can be an exciting adventure for some teens getting to do activities that they might not usually get to do. Families can spend quality time bonding and reconnecting, take pictures of the activities you and your family are doing together, you can scrapbook as a family about what you're doing during this time. Take a family walk in the woods, have a family dance party, or plan and make dinner together as a family, have scavenger hunts inside and outside. You can, you can use online resources such as PBS Kids for creative ideas. Encourage your teens also to reach out via phone or text to potentially isolated elderly family members and neighbors, to participate in neighborhood programs like Rainbow and Bear Scavenger Hunts, sidewalk chalk art, et cetera. I've seen a lot of this, of the, the chalk art as we go out walking, see a lot of that on us on the streets, and that's really cool, or in the driveways. Focus on calming activities that can help your teens to relax. Okay, so there's calming breathing techniques, mindfulness activities to reduce stress, yoga or stretching exercises, guided imagery or progressive muscle relaxations. You may be saying, okay, these sound great, I don't know what these things are, or I don't know how to do these things. If you look on YouTube, there are numerous, numerous videos that explain how to do these activities. There are YouTube videos that have guided imagery that show you how to go through the progressive muscle relaxation, relaxation. So if you go through YouTube and Google some of these things, you have a lot of, a lot of information and things that can lead you through it. And these are proven activities that help lower our stress level, help lower our anxiety. You can encourage your teen to keep a private journal or sketchbook where they can express their emotions through writing or drawing. For older children, find a social cause that you can learn about more, you can learn more about together as a family and support remotely. Take this time to be creative with a combination of communication methods for your children and your family. Phone calls, snail mail, email, text can all be used as for connection as well as the social media outlets. I know that I've learned a whole lot more than I ever knew about video conferencing in the last, oh gosh, five, six weeks, I've learned way more than I ever knew. So if you're not already familiar with them, learn things in terms of Facebook Messenger, Zoom, Google Hangouts, FaceTime, Teams. These are all great ways to connect with family and friends. There's a lot of power too, to be able to see somebody when you're trying to, you're trying to reach out and connect. Phones are great, obviously. Texting is even more removed, but when you can see somebody and actually connect with them in that way, at least my experience is, that you feel much more connected to them. You can also do things like play games over the internet through these different devices. I've been playing Spades with friends and family and other games, and these are ways to connect virtually and reach out to other people in your circle of friends and family. Connect with others as you go for daily walks. Leave positive sidewalk chalk notes for others, I've seen a lot of those. You can put pictures, post, you can post pictures in your windows or door to send positive messages to others. Take pictures of your family on your front porch and post them on neighborhood websites or Facebook pages. So there's, there are ways to really make this. I don't want to, well, when I say exciting time, not trying to diminish the, the, the reality of the crisis that we're dealing with, but try to make, try to take advantage of that one positive aspect of the COVID-19, which is the fact that families are able to spend more time together, try to maximize that, that, that one advantage. Okay. Go on to depression with teens. Depression, as we know, people with general sadness can cope and soon recover. Major depressive disorders last at least two weeks, affects ability to carry out school, work, other activities, keeps people from having satisfying personal relationships, often occurs in episodes. So if you do have a teenager that really seems depressed, and it seems to be going on for at least two weeks, and when I say really depressed, I mean that they have difficulty getting out of bed, they had, they're showing, they're not showing interest in other activities, they're not showing interest in being involved with anybody. They're likely not showing much interest in eating, or they're overeating, then these are something, this is something to worry about in terms of major depressive disorder. And I'll get into a little bit about some ways that you can help people who are going through an actual mental illness. So with depression, the first thing I would say is that you can do a lot of the things that I just mentioned for anxiety, you can also do to help with depression. Depression and anxiety, the two two issues have a lot of overlap. Certainly, certainly they have a lot of overlap in terms of symptoms. They, there's a lot of things that, that are common, sometimes, well, frequently, people who are depressed are also feeling anxious, people who are anxious are often feeling depressed. So there's a lot of things that, that you can do to help with, with anxiety, which can also help with depression. That said, general signs of symptoms of depression, and then usually sad mood, loss of enjoyment or interest in activities, lack of energy, perhaps feeling worthless or guilty when not at fault. At its worst, thinking about death, wishing to be dead, talking about death, moving more slowly, sometimes agitated or unable to settle down, changes in eating habits, sleep difficulties, or sleeping too much. Signs of depression at home. Complaints of tiredness, maybe somebody who's sleeping very little or sleeping way too much, but they're complaining of being tired all the time, difficulty with household chores. Now, that could seem like every teenager, but in reality, this is more what I'm talking about, just not having the energy to get up and do the household chores, withdrawing from the family, spending most of the time in their room, snapping at family members, picking fights with parents and their siblings, irritable behavior, and avoiding discussion of important future events. All right, so talking about teens, depression, grief, and loss. Cabin fever can cause depression, especially for extroverts. I've heard some people, well, some people have told me that they feel like they were made for, for quarantine, that they're, they're very introverted, they're doing just fine being at home. This is tailor-made for them. At the same time, for a lot of people, and myself included, like to be outdoor, outside, like to be with people, and so it's a lot harder to, to not have that social interaction. The lack of time with friends can create feelings of loneliness, grief, and loss. The loss of school activities can create grief and loss, especially for students missing school milestones such as prom and graduation. The loss of independence by college students who have had to return home to complete their school year. And the loss of a loved one to COVID-19, that's certainly happening at this point too. So let me talk about these, these issues. So as I said before, anxiety is completely natural to feel discomfort when things in your life or the world are uncertain. The pandemic is new to everybody, and it's bringing up feelings that we may have never experienced before. Help your teen take time to connect to how they're feeling. You may encourage journaling, vlogging, doing something creative, or simply taking a walk. They can, should do what feels best to them, but you really want to encourage them to talk about how they're feeling about what's going on and how they're coping with it. Find ways for your teen to connect with your wider family and friends and have them check in with one another to keep from feeling alone. Chances are, other people in their circle are experiencing similar feelings of loss or uncertainty. Encourage your teen not to isolate themselves, as this is often a motivation when someone is depressed. Help them stay involved in family activities. Consider online counseling if there's a need for extra support. All right, right now, there's not much, much in-person counseling going on because of the virus, but there's a lot of online counseling going on, either by phone or by things, by things like Teams or other, other programs or Zoom. And so certainly, there is still counseling to be had, and certainly, there are ways to get your, your teen hooked up with somebody who can talk with them at this point and give the extra support. Prom, graduation, sports, music, and play performances, along with many other end-of-the-year activities that our young people look forward to, have been canceled without notice. Many of these activities are rites of passage that teenagers no longer get the opportunity to experience. It comes as no surprise that as a result, our young people are mourning the loss of these anticipated events, especially those that are tied to that individual's identity. For example, I know a young man who was in show choir, and that's something that he's been doing for years, and he, it's a big part of what excites him about school, a big part of what he feels, a big part of his identity, big A big part of his identity, big part of what he feels connected to. And they had one big, big presentation, one big last. Show that they were preparing for and that's now been canceled and that's, that's a big loss. This is, this teenager's senior year, so it's their last chance to do it as a student in high school. And so it really is something that this person is grieving. And we have to really respect the fact that for this, for these students, these are actual losses. They're genuine losses, whether or not we see them as being. In the same. In the same seriousness as they see them, that doesn't matter that we don't see it the same way, if that's the case. Reality is that we have to understand that for them, this is a very genuine loss and something that they genuinely need to grieve. So we want to listen attentively as they talk about the loss, sit quietly, let them talk. Allow for the expression of all feelings and validate them. Keep the focus on the person and the pain. Okay, we really want to help them through the stages of grief and help them to, to. Recognize that this is something that, that is real. At the same time, we, we also want to look forward with them to things that may come in college, for example. If that's, if their plan is to go to college, other ways that they can get involved in. Show choir or things like show choir in college. So, so also be able to look ahead for things, but don't, don't encourage them to look ahead at the, at the price of not grieving. What it is they've lost at this point. School-aged children do not have the opportunity to say goodbye to their friends, classmates and teachers. School ended abruptly and did not allow time for closure. Many activities they anticipated will no longer be available. And so again, you want to listen attentively to, to that loss. Acknowledge and validate the loss, create a routine, make cards with your child to mail to the school, to the teachers. Reach out to the school through Facebook page or other platforms. Help them connect to online, to the online instruction that's going on, so they can feel connected to the school. In terms of, of college students who have come home, who, these are college students who have gone on to college. They've been becoming more independent, learning more about their independence, learning more about who they are as an independent individual. And then suddenly they're pulled back into the home and expected to go online and, and pull back into the family, family dynamics. And not really allowed to be that person often who they were when they were at college, just because of the nature of being back home. So again, you want to allow time for them to adjust to a new routine. Recognize that your college student is a young adult, allow space for independence. Encourage your student, your college students to remain connected to their school through social media. Remind them that this is temporary. This is something that I really should have mentioned earlier, that, that is a piece that we really want to remind people during, with, during anxiety and depression. Is that this is a temporary situation. It's starting to feel like it's not temporary when it gets on to be six or seven weeks. But the reality is that this is temporary and that there will be a time when this is over and we'll be looking back on this. And so that, so that the temporariness of it really can help people to recognize that, okay, if I can get through this. Then there's going to be another side to it. There's going to be another side where I'll look back. And I'll, I'll think about how I handled it at the time when I was going through it. That this is not the way, this is the new normal, quote unquote, is not going to be normal. At a certain point, we're going to go back to the way things were. In terms of losing a loved one to COVID-19. While grieving a loss is an inevitable part of life, there are ways to help cope with the pain, come to terms with grief. And eventually find a way to pick up the pieces and move on with life. So you really want, again, to acknowledge their pain, accept that grief can trigger many different and unexpected emotions. Understand that people's grief is going to be unique to them and that people are not always going to grieve or frequently are not going to grieve. The way that we expect them to grieve or the way that we would maybe perhaps grieve a similar situation. That everyone's situation is different, everyone is feeling different emotions, a lot of times there are very mixed emotions. And so we just need to be very patient and very understanding that people are going through a very personal situation with their loss. Help them to seek out support from people who care about them. Support them, help them support, help them support themselves, sorry, emotionally, by taking care of themselves physically. Okay. Recognize the difference between grief and depression. So again, if things start to become more serious and the grief does not seem to be. Or the grief seems to be more serious in the sense of people talking about possibly hurting themselves. Or thinking about death themselves, then you certainly want to reach out and try to help. Get outside supports in terms of counseling, that sort of thing to help them out with that. With, with any of the anxiety, the depression, you want to constantly be aware of a line between. What is expected and, and anticipated in terms of anxiety and depression and what is. More than we would normally expect or more than what we would normally see. And at that point, be aware and be willing to reach out for counseling. Okay. We really want to help our teens be resilient. The things that the studies have shown that really help people be resilient are to have healthy practices. Sleep, diet, exercise, self-care, these are all important. That's why it's important to be able to get out there, to get that exercise. Go for walks, go for bike rides, get, get enough sleep, eat well during this, during this pandemic. By eat well, I mean eat, eat healthily. And practice self-care. Positive self-esteem, certainly an element of resiliency, feeling in control of one's life, I've mentioned that. Spirituality, having a sense of being connected to something bigger than ourselves. Avoiding alcohol, tobacco and other drugs. I've also read that the use of alcohol has skyrocketed during this time, not surprising. Along with actually the, the purchase of marijuana in states where it's legal has also skyrocketed. You really want to try to avoid things like tobacco and alcohol and marijuana in terms of things, in terms of ways to just numb yourself. You want to try to, to keep yourself as, as healthy as possible during this time. Other things with resiliency and coping, have a consistency with the routine, as I mentioned. Identify others who may be helpful. Help your teens to feel close to at least one adult, hopefully that's going to be their parents. But for some teens, the person they might feel especially close to could be an uncle, an aunt, a neighbor. It could be a teacher, a coach, it could be someone like that. But you want to help them to, to identify who that person is and help them to reach out to that person for support. Regular school attendance, obviously at the moment that is difficult, but they can still be, have still regular school attendance with the online instruction. And then again, as I mentioned before, discuss professional help options with your family if, if necessary. Okay, adults. Alright, adults anxiety and depression. There's some similar things and there's some things that are different than from the teens. So feeling adrift, working from home, that's certainly something I think a lot of us are coping with or trying to cope with. Is working from home and feeling disconnected from our coworkers and then feeling disconnected from the, the office. And the social environment that we're used to there and, and the many things that help us do our jobs. Feeling anxious, trying to keep children occupied, that is certainly a huge thing that's going on right now. In terms of parents trying to, especially when parents are trying to work from home and try to keep their children occupied. Feeling anxious about the economic downturn and the possible effects on employment. And that talks about all the may people who have been redeployed or furloughed or let go. Leading into the next, the next item, feeling grief from the loss of a job. We've lost more jobs in the last four or five weeks and apparently that we had in the last, you know, however, how many years. In this country, it's, it's an incredible loss. So there are a lot of people out there who are trying to, to do all the other things that we're talking about in terms of keeping their children occupied. And worrying about the economic downturn, but are also dealing with the grief from the loss of a job. And then there are people who are suffering with a mental health disorder during the COVID-19 pandemic. There are people who are hopefully still getting counseling via the internet. But they're not able to see their counselors one-on-one, hopefully they're still getting their medications. We'll talk more about that in a minute, but certainly these are people who are having issues. That they will need some special care for. Alright. Let me go back a second, I'm sorry. Okay, so again, it's normal for people to have a lot of feelings. That are going to surface during a pandemic, help adults seek out support. The National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, has an extensive resource list of warm lines, support groups. And other mental health, emotional support organizations. Again, that's NAMI, it's N-A-M-I. If you Google them, they have tons and tons of resources and ways that people, that people can get involved. With, with extra support. Many resources are accessible by phone or the internet. Just like with physical health, it is important to get professional help when a mental health concern becomes more serious. Call 911 if you feel concerned regarding, regarding the level of mental distress. Encourage adults to reach out to family and friends and discuss their concerns and feelings of depression. Encourage them to allow others to support them during this difficult time. If they're feeling isolated, make sure they reach out enough to satisfy their need for social interaction. When possible, they can utilize video chatting to allow face-to-face contact with other people. In my own job, I do a lot of group therapy and it's able to be done, we're doing it on teams. And even though you can't see everyone's face all the time, that's one of the downsides. You can certainly see people, you can see their faces, they can see your face and it makes the, the connection much more real. When we're going through the, the group process. Encourage people to take it easy on themselves. A common symptom of depression is feeling guilty for things that we are not guilty of and a feeling less than others. So remind the adult that feeling down is a normal reaction to the virus and its results. That feeling isolated is natural with social distancing. They need to understand that they are not alone, that others are also struggling with depression over personal and societal changes. In terms of people who've lost their jobs, grief is natural after a loss. And this is again, this is another loss. Some people experience grief after the loss of a job. Work not only provides financial benefits, but it also provides structure, routine, companionship, friendship and a sense of identity. So it's essential for adults to recognize and accept their feelings regarding this loss. And to accept that job loss during this time is nobody's fault, that people getting let go. Because of companies closing or being furloughed, that this is simply something, it's not their fault, but something that has to happen at this point, unfortunately. Help them understand that grief is a process, has different stages, some days will be better than others. Things that can help them through the process, giving themselves time to adjust, creating a daily schedule and sticking to it. Taking care of themselves, eating healthy, exercise, as I mentioned before, getting enough rest, drinking water. Staying connected to supports. Okay, and again, the, the, the knowledge that this is temporary, that, 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 that this will end. The economy will start kicking back into gear and jobs will start to open up again. I don't say that to minimize what they're going through, but just the reality that this is a temporary process. And that if they can get through this process, then they can move on to, to when things start to open up. How to support a person who with a mental illness during the pandemic. Encourage them to continue taking their medication. There's no reason to stop taking their medication just because there's a pandemic. The prescribing doctor should give specific instructions to any change in medication. Many private counseling centers are providing ongoing counseling, as I mentioned before. And they should continue to do the counseling and not lose touch with their clinician and prescribing doctor. If the individual is homebound due to COVID-19, help them maintain as much of their usual routine as they can. Clients that I work with, they talk about setting goals for themselves each day. Even if it's something like going through a closet and cleaning out a closet and sorting through things. That goal helps them to feel like they've accomplished something by the end of the day. Just want to repeat again that NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness, has a lot of resources. Options range from online chats with actual therapists to free downloadable tools, worksheets and mental health apps. There's peer-led online support and discussion groups that offer an op, that offers an option to those who can't get to in-person support groups. I'm looking at the clock and trying to realize how much I have left, left to talk to, talk about. If someone's having thoughts of suicide, respond immediately if a person is harming themselves or about to harm themselves, call 911. The National Suicide Prevention Hotline is, is, was lit, was put up on the screen earlier and will be up there again. You want to have safe storage of medications and guns and that's that you limit access to common methods used for suicide. Stay, stay connected to family and friends and coworkers, reach out to others who may not have support. If you know somebody that's having a tough time, this is a good time to reach out to them and offer support. And then, and then to maintain the healthy habits. Look for potential signs of somebody thinking about suicide. Could be threatening to harm or kill themselves, talking or writing about suicide. Examples of this could include making statements or writing, I wish I was dead or my life will never get better. Posting about death or dying by suicide, hopelessness, withdrawal from friends and family. Loss of interest in leisure activities, increased agitation or anger. Ask the person if they are thinking about suicide and listen to him or her. It's a difficult question to ask somebody that and it doesn't put the thought into their, their head. If you ask them if they're thinking about suicide, you're not putting the thought in their head that wasn't there already. If they're going to think about it, then they're going to think about it on their own. But by asking them the question, you're putting it straight out there and then you're giving them a chance to feel better by actually expressing how they're feeling. If the person is, is harming or about to harm themselves, call 911, as I mentioned. Okay, how can I stay connected to my recovery community during COVID? So there are people, a lot of people who are in recovery. Who are unable to attend AA meetings or any meetings. There are 12-step meetings during this time. Encourage people to stay connected online as many recovery meetings are now online. People can attend NAA or Smart Recovery meetings by phone or by video, often by Zoom. They can make plans to meet, quote unquote, their peers at an online or phone meeting. They should try and keep the routine the same, make a cup of coffee to enjoy during the meeting or plan to meet up. With a friend online after the meeting. Encourage people to keep working on their recovery. If someone is working NA or AA or Smart Recovery, they can talk to their sponsor about how to keep moving forward. They can read the literature and stay grounded in their recovery. If someone is working Smart Recovery, they can work on some of the online activities or watch their YouTube talks. For other recovery paths, find a way to work the program from home. For other recovery paths, find a way to work the program from home. There are lots and lots and lots of YouTube videos with inspirational speakers about different recovery issues. And so these are ways to get more information and to stay connected to your recovery. If someone's in an outpatient treatment program, stay in contact with your clinician. They may be able to have your session by phone or video. And people should have a plan to call someone every day to check in. If the person's able, or if you're able, be that person for someone else. Try and talk using video chat, like I mentioned, having that face-to-face contact often helps people to feel more connected. You want to help people stay motivated in their recovery. This is a great, great opportunity to put into practice the taking it one day at a time. It's important to stay in the present moment. When we think too much about the week ahead, the two weeks ahead, or how many weeks We might have to be still in the quarantine, that can become overwhelming. You really want to just take it one day at a time. Brush up on relapse prevention. We encourage them to do that. As I mentioned, YouTube has a lot of recovery stories to keep people inspired. Watching motivational speakers, make a plan for each day. Being isolated can be hard, but having a routine can help. If safe to do so, go outside for fresh air and sun. If you're able, try working out. There are many free resources online. Taking care of your physical health is good for your recovery and mental health. Try and learn something new. Many libraries have multiple ways to learn online. That's something else you can do to occupy your time. And also helping others helps us. Try to focus on others. Ask yourself what you can do for someone else each day. Whether it's shopping for a neighbor or preparing a nice meal for your family. Look for ways you can assist in your community while practicing social distancing. Ideas may include donating food to the local food bank, checking on isolated neighbors as safely as you can. Donating blood, which is right now at a very low, low capacity, or donating supplies to essential personnel. And again, checking with your recovery peers and help them stay connected. Okay, last thing, and I don't know that I have, I have to skip ahead. I only have a few minutes left, is take care of yourself. You know, I've talked about ways to try to help other people. But certainly take care of yourself because you can't help others if you don't take care of yourself. You may experience quarantine and quarantine fatigue and caution fatigue. Caution fatigue is where we get tired of Being cautious and we start going out and doing things that we shouldn't be doing in terms of social, of the being Socialized, I'm sorry, of being, having the social distancing and so on, because we just get tired of doing it. You may feel overwhelmed by all the bad news regarding the pandemic, so be careful of how much you take in. And you may need some extra support to continue with your responsibilities. I have more on all that, but I think that I am out of time. So I'm going to turn it back over to Crystal.
Eric, that is such good information and people are really active in the chat box, so I know that people are asking if they can have access to the slides, so you and I can talk about that a little later. But if it's okay now, I'd like to go ahead and pose some of the questions that were in the chat. And I know Bethany and Herman are also helping me watch the chat, so if I miss something, if one of you two will, will call that out for me. One of the questions that came up first, Eric, was Andrea said, you know, she's seen avoidance and her teenage son. What can they do to help alleviate the isolation?
So the question is, what could they do to help him? Help him not to be as isolated in the time he's spending in his room and so on?
Well, it sounds like avoidance.
Yeah, avoidance, yes. Yeah, what you really want to try to do are find the things that he likes to do. And do those things with him if at all possible. So even if it means getting in there and getting your Fortnite on, Then it means getting in there and trying to spend some time with him, doing the different activities that he likes to do. Most people, even those who don't want to talk very much, once you get onto a topic that they really like to talk about, something that they really enjoy, then they'll talk. If you really, if you talk about things you want to talk about, a lot of times people will be quiet. But if you talk about what they want to talk about, they'll open up. And so you really want to try to get in there and do the things with him That he wants to do, that he likes to do, so that at least you're spending some time together. And you can try to, try to, try to have that minimize the isolation and help him to feel more connected to the family.
Thank you. Another question says, from Chantel, "The pandemic is also stirring up past trauma and PTSD for some people." And usually it's suggested for people to seek professional help, but what if they have trauma associated with the mental health care system? Or simply can't talk to a professional or adult due to deep mistrust? The question is, how can we be sensitive to this but help the person? Are there good self-help resources we could direct them to?
Wow, that's good. That's a very good question, yeah. A person could reach out on behalf of somebody else to a professional and ask Ask for some advice in terms of what, of ways that they can, questions they can ask, things that they can do. Certainly you want to be, you want to talk to the person and let them express what they're going through. And get from them what it is that is triggering them and what are things that are soothing to them. So that you want to be able to help them with as many coping strategies as you can. It's, it's, yeah, it's difficult if you're not willing to go seek help. But at minimum, you can try to find out what things are making it worse for them, so you can try to avoid those activities. And then again, try to find out what activities are soothing for them, what activities help them to feel calmer. So that, so that you can help them, you can help them to utilize those coping strategies.
Hey, thanks Eric. And Eric, I'm going to ask you to hit the stop share button on your screen.
Okay.
And I'm going to give you one other question, as though that one weren't hard enough. You're on the line to answer these questions. So there's another question from an anonymous attendee. And I'm going to read it verbatim. It says, "My parents completely shut me off from being able to talk to others And plan to keep it that way till school. They still have phones and stuff and aren't really available to talk to about anything going on in my head and my feelings. What should I do?"
Wow. That's a tough situation to be in. I would, I would encourage somebody, if they have another individual That they can reach out to, but of course, without their phone, that that may be very difficult to do. Huh. I guess I would have to hear more of the situation. But certainly Would want to encourage them to be able to, if they have another adult in their life, like a coach or an uncle or a non, or somebody that they can reach out to. If there's, if there's a landline, if there's any other way to reach that person, just to be able to share their feelings and talk about what's going on with them. I guess I'd have to know why it is that the parents would want to cut off the contact, what their motivation is for that reason. Yeah.
Maybe.
I might interject here. So, you know, without knowing the family's situation, like Eric said, but is, if, if There is a way, but I don't know the parents, but if there's a compromise, because I know that We can tend to want to take a phone away as a punishment and As a way to try and say, "You need to focus on your schoolwork and you need to, you know, you would be in school right now and you wouldn't have your phone and things like that." And I know something that's worked for my kiddo is to say, "We're going to operate like school hours, but then you can have connection with your friends At a certain time." So just going kind of back on how Eric pointed out, and I am not a very structured person. And it really hit home with me that that is what we need, is to have some structure. So even if there's an hour, two hours that you could compromise With your parents, possibly, maybe you've had that conversation with them that you're feeling really isolated. If you can demonstrate that you've gotten your work done or demonstrate certain responsibilities in the house have been taken care of, could you earn some privileges back with the phone? But again, not knowing the whole story in this situation, but I just thought I would share that it, it From a parent perspective too, it's, it is easy to sometimes grab that phone and it's good to hear that, you know, there's got to be a balance there somewhere.
Yeah, that's a good answer.
Yeah, I totally agree. And I don't know, it seems a little extreme. My, my thought was, with no way to communicate with anyone else, maybe write a letter To one of your relatives that, you know, you really trust and you know, they won't, you know, do anything to To, you know, upset the situation even more. And just express your feelings in a letter maybe to an aunt or an uncle. Or, you know, another relative outside of the household, if they'll let you mail a letter or something like that might be good, but That is, that's, I don't think that's going to be good in the long run, to not have any communication with any of your friends. And Unless there's something deeper that you're not telling us about that situation.
It's difficult. I know it's a difficult question and it's a difficult one to assess without having a further conversation, but Because this conversation is complex and that question was posted. And anonymous attendee, thank you for posting that question and that you are able to be on this session. We do hope there's some Something that you've been able to glean from this as well as everyone else, but we have come to the end of our, our time together today. I just wanted to thank Eric so much for being on with us and tackling this, this topic. It's not an easy one to talk about, but it's certainly critically important. And so you gleaned some resources that were posted in the chat as well as on the previous slide. If you were registered for this session, you will receive a copy of the recording link. And in that email will also include all of the resources that were shared. I put in the chat while you were speaking, Eric, the domestic violence, the national hotline. And when you mentioned that, and I put the NAMI resources in the chat box, we'll include those in the email as well as the others. And then we went, last Friday, we did resiliency and that was a little, you know, tougher topic. And today, you know, we certainly tackled this issue. We don't want to shy away from those issues. This Friday, we'll do our usual Friday at 10:00 AM balancing life session. We'll be talking a little more about self-care. It's on the treat yourself, so a lighter touch, but we'll actually sort of hit again on some of the things that Eric talked about in this session. But with a lighter touch, so if you haven't registered for that, we'll include that registration link as well. So at this point, I just want to thank everyone for your time. And let you know, any, this recording and any of the previous recordings are also able to be found on our Virginia Cooperative Extension website. So thank you to everyone for joining and thanks again, Eric.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for having us. And I just wanted to bring up, one, one person wrote in the text, in the chat box. For any of you that are out there and you feel like you need to reach out to someone, you're doing online learning, reach out to your teachers. That was something I didn't even think about, that someone wrote that in the chat box. So if you, if you're having a problem at home, and we're really fearful for some of these children at home right now. Because they may be in a bad situation. I know that 4-H Camp was a getaway, a safe haven for a lot of kids, and they told me that. You know, and they just feel so bad having to leave, but Real quick, yeah, reach out to your teachers if you're online, if you can, if they'll let you type in Questions or even open your mic and ask a question. Tell them, "Hey, I need to talk to you right after class," or something like that, and express what's going on, so because we want you all to be safe.
Great point, great point. Right, thanks everyone so much and enjoy the rest of this day.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.